So maybe there's a way to make sure it is included in.
Yes, Kelly. Yes, Bob.
Yeah, okay. I have a background in engineering.
Yes.
And you're gonna hire a company, I don't know, you have to pick their group yet?
We have to get the grant first. This is basically a public, yeah, this is one of those where we have to have the public hearing so we can.
You're not gonna hire, hire a company from your perspective?
I don't believe that is in the works.
Yeah, we're beginning to get some solid ground here. Okay, if, uh, if you hire an engineering corporation, the first thing they're gonna say is, uh, where's your data? Because we don't want it to come up here with our transits and their pipeline and discovering tools and go over and get their own data, right? Because you do apparently give some plans and at least you know a little bit about where the pipeline is. But the next thing they're gonna wanna know is, how much water are you using every year?
Well, that would be serious.
And where are you keeping it? And what are, what are your plans to whatever you're gonna do with it?
Well, that would, I mean.
It's all part of my concern. If you're gonna get any money, then make it very specific. If you're gonna get a grant, to get a meter in every use off of this, this, off of the district. Well, it looks like you got, uh, what did I just read, eleven hundred, if you don't have eleven hundred users, you have a lot of three hundred and eighty connections. So what you're gonna do is buy three hundred and eighty meters. And this idea about the plumbing has to be compliant, compliant with who?
I was told, I was told that, uh, it had, it has to meet code. That was what I had heard, Bob. Again, this is, this is, I would imagine that it is building code.
Bob, are you, the question, this is a hearing to apply for an engineering study. It's not a, a hearing to argue about whether or not the supervisor understands.
I'm already doing the study, so you just be quiet enough and you can start. Because I, I don't know what you're gonna do. But if you don't, if, if there's anybody with any engineering background as well, come in here and say, well, how much are you using every year?
Well, that would be a.
You've made an estimate.
Right.
You don't know how much.
No, it's, it's all, it's all, it's all.
You don't know how much is cool if you can show.
It's all based on EDUs.
If you don't have any data, any kind of engineering that you're gonna get is gonna be useless. Believe me.
Okay.
So if you wanna get money, get money to put meters throughout the program. And then you can start getting some definite, very specific, very accurate data and hire, I hope, somebody other than your usual engineer. I don't have anything, you know.
Okay.
Go ahead, Jim. Go ahead with the grant.
Bob, are you for applying for this engineering study or are you against it? Because your comments weren't clear.
Okay, okay. You're gonna need some more time?
This what's, it's a public hearing is, it's, it's an opportunity to discuss.
Well, I, I read the engineering study, uh, four, uh, four years ago, uh, from the sewer district. And it turns out that the study was, uh, covered, the cost of it, I think it was twenty-six thousand dollars. And the engineering company that is, uh, your favorite, apparently set up, uh, schedules for what they're gonna study. Well, I read the whole thing, page for page, and it was about that table. And the only thing that they studied was a Renko. I'm sure you know about a Renko. That is, all they studied was a Renko. They, you know, and they studied it and then they said, well, this, this, a Renko does this, and a Renko does that. And a Renko, a Renko, they're, they're maybe here, they're gonna do this and do that. They never really did a study of possibilities for sewage, uh, treatment and, and what they've done. And there are probably about four different possibilities to treat the sewage in this whole community. And, and they need more ways to do it. And they never, they never touched anything but a Renko. So, uh, as far as I can see, uh, if you say you wanna hire somebody to do a study, if you get a study, if what you're gonna pay for is the same quality that, uh, was purchased for twenty-six thousand dollars, through the sewer, uh, sewer project, then you're, I don't know whose money you're gonna waste. I hope it's none of mine.
Okay.
So are you for the, the grant application for engineering to study our water district?
Well, first of all.
It's, that's.
When are you gonna start?
It's outlined here, so.
Is she, what, are you talking to this sheet? Right here?
So we're having a hearing, so I, I'd like your input, a, a simple yes or no. Are you for us applying for this grant, Bob, or are you against us?
The grant, what I believe on this sheet, I, I don't see there's anything here that has a work to spend any public money on, whether it's coming from New York State or whether it comes from the water, uh, water, uh, wells.
I'm for it, thank you.
If you don't have meters involved in this thing, and has, has about a hundred, or maybe eighty-five percent of the grant money going to buy, if you have to buy the water, uh, they're not, they're not willing. They just, they need your water, but, uh, anyway, uh, then you, you're not going anywhere. You're, you're just spinning your little bit of a mud hole. So call it what you want.
Jerry.
I've, can, can you, so they say you can. You guys heard of the term engineering study? Is it, is it gonna, I, I, I read the sheet, I don't know if I get it. Is it just gonna be something that would tend to a feasibility study, where they would look at a range of alternatives? Establish the cost, provide a line for each alternative, and cook it some way, and recommend it? Or, or is it something that maybe doesn't go so far?
I don't know that it goes quite that far. My impression is what they wanna do is they wanna look at what we have in the way of wells, what we have in the way of volume, what we use. And then from there, determine what we might be able to, to enhance what we have.
So is it fair to call it more of a possibility?
Yeah, I believe that's a better way of putting it, yes.
I did speak with Jonathan today, he was very helpful, um, and I think part of it is knowing we have these wells, but are they all still viable? Are they, are, can we, can we still use them all? I think that's part of the question, um, and if they aren't also viable, what are alternatives that we can, we can then go for?
Yeah, and part of what I was asking was, what I was envisioning was more of a feasibility study. I think we, along with costing out all benefits, but alternative finance, for example, on the meter issues, other municipalities around the country that run this, where the water district runs the cost of the meters. And then there's on-dole finance, you pay back to the district if you're not, you know, water, but some portion of that cost. The time, the time that it takes to pay, that the cost of the meters is, we can tell you. But again, that could be something, it sounds like maybe it's down where a part of it, either, but you have a problem.
Kelly, you have a question?
I was gonna ask, I was, what he was objecting to was moving ahead of the engineering study, but I would have an immediate, gone before that, so we could have that. Is that what you're saying?
The metering is, as I said, it's eighty-five, now already up to ninety-five percent of whatever work, the next major piece of work that should be done on the water district is installing the air, I believe, by this pipe coming out the street. And why the answer is, trying to get an idea from an engineering point of view is, uh, what, what kind of wells do you have, and so what? Uh, who, who, who hires them? What about the, the guy you used to know?
Charlie.
Charlie?
Yeah.
Isn't Charlie still the engineer?
No.
No.
Well, who have you got now? Well, who, there goes, and this, this is the new guy that watches over the, he knows where the wells are, he knows how the pumps work. But what, so what? His, his information on the, on the water system is good as anyone's. Because you don't have any real good data for an engineer to do any complicated, uh, calculations to estimate what a, a twenty-five group will tell them. So believe me, get meters on these buildings and pray for your own goods. You have no idea how, how equal this is. Maybe so, I remember the old lady who used to live on the corner, and they're all by herself. And, uh, and she got the same rate for the water in her house as anybody else, but nobody knew exactly how much water she was using. And it's, but that is, for me, I believe, the thing that's important is, uh, she gets a bill of one hundred and seven hundred dollars.
So just, let's, let's get back here to, are there, what I'm looking for, are those that are concerned about us going forward with the grant? So if you're concerned and don't want us or don't think we should, that's really what we need to know. So Chris, what is, what, I mean, are you?
I have two comments. The first is, I'm for it for him. The second is, I think if you wanted to determine how much water is being used, there must be something on the wells that will tell you how much the pumping, how that should earn us. And I think there's, I think there's only two active wells right now versus the three. Because I think the power was cut to one by accident. But if you want that, excuse me, and accurate usage of your water, I, I would double check and, and check your well pumps. They should, they should have.
Jennifer.
I, I don't wanna say anything about the grant, because I wasn't here this year with the information on it.
Well, it's.
I didn't wanna respond to the point of the argument. I'm like a little old lady. I'm the one who uses no water. I have a church that has half a gallon, and I've got a family here, this year I'm getting the church water on, and I'm paying for it at commercial rates, not the residential church. And I don't feel that we should be putting meters on at taxpayer expense. That's the cause. I think equitable and right thing to do to have meters everywhere, so we can equally charge people for the water they're using. But the cost of putting the meters on, and necessarily we get that public benefit, better than the public by a grant. Um, I'm just convinced that in this situation, we should be doing the things that sound illogical, sound illogical. But I do think that if anybody hooks up to the system, it's possible to put something to, to adopt a resolution that says, from this time on, if you hook up, you need to have a system that is meter ready for the day when, and eventually, as people hook up or do major renovations, they will become meter ready and then it comes to the use of it in the town, and the taxpayers in it. As a taxpayer, I'm getting hit left and right, and water district is one of the ways I'm getting hit left and right. But I'm a little old lady, I'm using no water and getting charged for it at commercial rates, and I'm still getting meters because of that pump cost, that initial cost. It's just, doesn't seem like it's gonna, and it's gonna, there's such a small difference. Makes such a difference that it would spend a lot. So I just wanted to share my opinion on that.
Got it.
As far as the grant goes, I don't have anything to say about it.
Okay. Anybody, that's what I'm looking for, is anybody that does not believe we should move forward with the grant. That's what I'm looking for.
Or is in favor of us?
Yes, uh, can, see, show hands, who thinks we should move forward with it?
I'm sorry, should it move?
Move forward, get the grant, yes or no? Okay. All right, again, I'm just, that's what this is for, folks. Okay.
I would definitely vote yes, if you had, uh, if you had presented the, I'm your engineer, the specifics, if you want the engineering company's perspective. But right now, whatever they're gonna study is useless because they have no solid data, no, except they have a rainwater line, they gotta do springs, they gotta cover well. They do.
Okay. Understood. Okay. Any other comments about the grant, pro or con? Yep, I, I see you, Kelly, yes.
It's not about the grant, it's about expansion, and this comes from Bob. He has noticed that there is an empty well down what he's down on, that they're connected to, and a three.
I've heard about this. Yep. Mm-hmm. Okay. All right, any other comments? All right. Seeing none, I'm gonna say that we are now closed for the public hearing. So now I'm gonna call the board meeting to order. A resolution to accept the minutes of July first. So, um, I need a motion to bring this to the floor, please.
Move. Second.
Any comments or concerns? Seeing none, call for vote, all those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Um, the next on the agenda is resolution for the use of ARPA funds, twenty-five hundred dollars, uh, for emergency planning committee mailing. Um, actually had a, quite a long conversation with, there's Arthur now, um, this afternoon. This basically is to collect data, um, for, uh, our citizens who are vulnerable. And it's gonna be very interesting as to how we collect the data, but I can give an example as to what we're trying to accomplish. Um, when the tornado hit and people lost power out on Garnet Lake, there was an electric line that was down. No one could get in or out. There were people behind the electric line that were diabetic and needed insulin. And so that insulin was actually walked in to those people. Um, so what we're trying to do is, obviously, those that, you know, are, um, are, have a health, health issues, whether it's insulin, in need of insulin, in need of oxygen, that type of thing, that's the data we're trying to collect, um, with the use of this money and this mailing. Need a motion to bring this to the floor, please?
So move?
Second.
Discussion. No? Okay.
Well, money was spent.
Yep, I agree. Okay. Uh, seeing none, I call for vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, resolution for the Mill Creek Recreation Area. Um, David, you wanna talk about this and then we'll kind of go from there?
First of all, thanks for having me here.
Please and thank you. This is David Nelson, he is from the Planning Department, uh, Warren County Planning Department.
Thank you for having me here. Um, yeah, so, uh, first of all, I'd like to apologize for not getting the Mill Creek recreational assessment to you guys until this afternoon. Uh, that was an oversight on our part. We've also been working some logistics, um, with our county departments, particularly the DPW. So the county owns the rail line that cuts through Mill Creek Rec area. And, uh, as we go forward, we're going to need to cross the rail line in, in at least two locations, so we wanted to work that out first. But this is a living document, nothing is set in stone. What we have here with this recreational assessment is a really good concept to develop the property in a way that would be appropriate for recreational use, mountain biking, hiking, and river access. So we'd like to move forward with the grant this month. And then, um, in, in the meantime, also reach out and engage the town, uh, town staff, the public, both before and after we submit the grant, to make sure that, uh, we, we have a consensus that we've put together a good project.
All right, so I need a motion to bring this to the floor, please.
Motion?
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, this is, um, I, I saw, I saw some of the rec plan, that, uh, wilderness property management conducted. So just a little more background, I know that the county had put in a, um, grant request to do, uh, an assessment of the, uh, potential development at Mill Creek. Looking at a whole bunch of different areas, uh, and, and bringing in a professional trail builder to, uh, potentially lay out trails, as well as looking at the Black Hole swim area. So I, I, I was able to see some of that plan. What I see, I fully support. Their, their, their goal is to, uh, begin, begin construction of some preliminary, um, trail and beginning of the trail network, leaving the Black Hole swimming area separate, because that will encompass a much larger, um, commitment and development, so that that is, you know, stable for years to come. My only concern, uh, and I kind of brought this up to Kevin this morning, was that we haven't engaged the public. This is a public a- asset. It's, it's one of, uh, potential great recreational areas. And, and having that public feedback, I think, is extremely important in the process. Talking with the people at the county today, um, I understand that there is a timeline on the grant, uh, that they need to apply for, um, on our behalf. Their match, there will be no match on the town's part, that'll be a match through the county's part. So it's a, it's, it's a win-win for the town. And, and they assured that there, there can be changes made to that plan. We can apply for the grant now, we can hold public discussions, we can involve other stakeholders, um, you know, including our own, you know, park staff. And, and those changes can be modified and made. So that being said, I'm, I'm uncomfortable that we haven't engaged the public fully, uh, but this could be a real win for our community. And we can engage the public, uh, as we move forward. And, and there, we're under no obligation to accept the grant if we actually get the grant. So we're not tied to anything, um, but I think it's important for us to move forward with this.
This is just making sure that we can get the money, we're not gonna miss that deadline, and then once we have it, then we can make any changes, do all that kind of stuff.
That's right. So a little bit about the process, the deadline to apply for the grant is July thirty-first. Uh, so this is really the board's last opportunity to pass a resolution in support of, of that application. We will probably find out five or six months from now if we receive the grant. We can definitely hold some public engagement in the meantime. Then if we do receive the grant, the first, the first part of the project will be to complete the planning documents, um, and the actual design. So that will also have a robust public engagement process, so we'll have plenty of opportunity to do that. Wilderness Property Management completed their assessment in early May. We've gone through some discussions with them since then to make sure that we understand the concept fully. And then, like I said, we have also had conversations with DPW to get their, uh, their buy-in on the project. So that's where we're at right now. The grant is gonna be approximately, uh, three hundred thousand dollars. And that will develop up to four miles of trail, both mountain bike trail and then shared use trail, which will be a wider, uh, trail that can accommodate basically two-way traffic. Hiking would have to occur one way, mountain biking, uh, in the opposite direction, so there's no, or we can minimize user conflicts.
Um, discussion, is there any public, or would you add?
Yes. Yes. I can't see why not. I mean, yeah, I mean, we could certainly put it on the website. I can't imagine why there's, yeah, absolutely, yeah, sure. Yes, Kelly.
I would say that there has been quite a bit of public discussion about this, maybe not perhaps that this meeting. There's been a lot of public involvement. First it was the Mill Creek Development Committee, uh, that met for all the residents in the area down there. But they first started complaining about some of the problems that were happening, and then they came up with some solutions. Uh, we keep this around as an idea for, and the people in the Chastis, aware of it, um, even for several years, as to where, where to go next. So when the county picked it up, I was thrilled, wow, that's great, because nothing like getting support from our county to develop stuff for us, that will help us, not only the residents, how new place to hike, bike, whatever, but also bring them. I thank you very much for having done all that work. I know how much work it is.
Yes, Bob?
Oh, I'll step back, or anybody else wants to talk. Uh, it makes seriously no sense to me, uh, to spend, to also get a grant for three hundred thousand dollars. For, and it's gonna be for planning, and it isn't up for building, it's just for planning.
It's for both, planning and implementation, yes.
So what, you got any percentages, how much it's gonna cost to plan?
About. Sure, about thirty-five thousand to plan, two hundred sixty-five thousand, it's slightly over that to actually develop the trail system.
Thirty-five and sixty-five, that's a nice.
Two sixty-five, I'm sorry. Two sixty-five.
Thirty-five and two, thirty-five and two sixty-five.
There's, there's a problem, I have heard it off the bat, and I know that there's a lot of, uh, downpour taxpayers and downpouring people that I, that have a strong interest in the, uh, uh, micro, Mill Creek Recreation. And that is, how on earth if they decide to spend a hundred fifty-five thousand dollars on a bike trail? Uh, there's nobody biking down there, do you know that?
I'm sorry, where is this?
Mill Creek.
Uh, along Mill Creek?
Is it Mill Creek?
In this, this.
Yeah, there's nobody biking, uh, on the Mill Creek Recreation, there's nobody biking on the Mill Creek Recreation.
And that's why we're building.
There is it.
Yeah.
However, uh, any given day, a nice sunny day, like the day, on the weekend, there's probably, you can count, uh, many, many people at the end of the season, probably anywhere from thirty-four thousand people that go down to Black Hole. So you're gonna try to get, if the board, they're, they're gonna take the kids, that few guys down in the lake, they're, they're gonna get them. And they're gonna say, you gotta be kidding me. They're not gonna spend any money on, on solving the problem of Black Hole if they're gonna plan for biking, and nobody's biking?
Well, I.
That's real. Black Hole is a problem. They're ruining Black Hole. Do you know that, do you?
Yes. I, I.
How can you decide to go to a point of, of grant, and you're not gonna get to the major problem in Mill Creek Recreation?
Um, well, I think, as, as Jim referenced, we also did a recreational assessment on the Black Hole Dunkley Falls area. And because of the, the topography there, because of, you know, just the, the situation, it's going to be a lot more expensive. So what we want to do.
We already know that. We have been studying, and I'm talking about the committee that, uh, Kelly was talking about, that I was part of that committee. I was there the day when, uh, who's the guy that took this, most of the quote-off, Nova, put into Black Hole, and he, he came. put into Black Hole, and he became the commissioner, I can't remember his name, but anyway, when the property was being discussed to, for the county to get a home permit, and so, and that took years. And Arnold, do you remember when you and I and a bunch of other people went down to Black Hole and dug it up and got rid of all the junk down there? Dug a hole, buried all the trash, then we brought in a bunch of big tables and outhouses, and cleaned it out a little bit. That was 25, 30 years ago. And now, the big tables have all been burned up, most of the pedestal covers have disappeared, and you're still, are not going to spend any money on Black Hole. You are, Jim, you're crazy to support this.
Kelly, go ahead.
He's not crazy.
What they're doing is putting two phases. They're looking to develop trails, okay, now, because it is less expensive. And then, when a big grant comes along, like the million dollar grant that's out there from the PDA line or whatever, you know, you can go out for that to develop Black Hole, it's a two-phase project.
Any other comments from the... Yes?
How many agents was that?
About, yeah, just under 200. I think the Riverside section is 177, and the Black Hole is about 20, 20 or so.
All right. We got, you know, motion first and second, right?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Anybody else? Further discussion? Yes, Pete?
Just maybe up here, separately, can you say what the plan is, concept plan, just saying?
Yes, I would call it a concept plan. The trail system has been plotted out on a map, but of course, it's free to change.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, call for vote, all those in favor? Aye. Okay. Resolution for Smart Growth Community Planning and Zoning Grant. This is a zoning grant that we did not get last time around. They're going to reapply for us, because as I think most people here know, the zoning laws that are currently on the books are from 2006 or 2007, certainly need to be updated. And for the amount of money, I believe it's around $50,000, it will save the town a lot of money and a lot of headache, because it's going to be a major project. So, that said, I need a motion to bring this to the floor, please.
Motion?
Second, okay. Discussion.
And speaking with Ethan, just to make sure it's clear to everybody, even though that they will be helping as professionals with overseeing this, it will obviously be a town-led...
Yeah, yeah.
Initiative, so the comprehensive plan will be the guiding document, but our planning board, our zoning board, and obviously, members of the town board will be involved in the process. We'll just be leaning on them as the professionals to be helping with the writing of it and guiding us. So, it's not that they will be rewriting all of it without our input, we will definitely be involved.
Us, the County Planning Department.
The county, yes.
County planning.
The county, yes. No, no, Warren County, yes.
Okay. Yes, Pete?
Is this an opportunity to highlight, as a, just to highlight in connection to the...
Campaign.
Yes.
Front and center.
This is the exact same state program, so yes.
Yep. Okay. So, at this point, call for vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, next, resolution to approve Mountain to River Downtown Connection Initiative. So, Anna and I had a bit of a conversation yesterday about this, and it's one of those things where sometimes I move perhaps a little bit quicker. And...
It's all good, no, it's all good.
So...
We're all enthusiastic, this is good stuff.
This is one of the things where what we're looking to do, obviously, and it's the thing, it is the comment that I've heard more times than I care to say, is that we don't seem to get any traffic on Main Street from our skiers, or is not as much as we would like.
Hikers, cyclists.
Hikers, I'm sorry, skiers, hikers, cyclists, the whole nine yards. Anyways, this whole, the whole point of this is to try to get, make the connection, so that we can get people, more people into downtown.
And I think the outdoor recreation plan, the comprehensive plan, the wilderness plan, they've all shown that people want to find a way to have those connections to the ski bowl. So, this would be in phase two, having multiple safe and obvious connections for whether you are a family, whether you are a seasoned cyclist, to get from Main Street to the ski bowl. So, not just a narrow hidden path, but multiple, multiple ways. So, that could, you know, this obviously is going to involve, and David, correct me if I'm wrong, but in talking to Ethan, you know, this is going to have to be a study to see what that would look like, if it's changing speed limits, if it's putting in sidewalks. So, this is phase two, which is that study portion before we go into the implementation. But it's about listening to what all those studies have said, the comprehensive plan, and then finding a way to make multiple safe and obvious accesses for people to get to the ski bowl and get them onto Main Street.
That's correct, this would be a planning study. So, I guess what you can say right now is the town and the county have the idea in place. As you said, we've cited it in numerous plans as a high priority. So, the next step would be taking this to the planning level. We feel that that would be a good scope of work for this next grant, and then, in the future, pursue other grant funding to actually implement it. You know, if the town is interested in the New York Forward program or the DRI program that's coming this fall, brings millions of dollars to downtowns, this would be an ideal project to reference in that.
So, we are going to be doing that, we think that this fall may be too soon for us to do that, but the CDC is definitely going to be working out that we think we may do the next cycle. But in my conversation with Ethan, we talked about, can we flow all of this in? And if we're starting it now, it wouldn't be bad to start it now and even have it for...
That's, that's, that's right. So, yeah, these, the New York Forward, these economic development programs, New York Forward and DRI, really look for not just completed plans and projects, but ideas. They want to see that you have a vision for the future.
Need a motion, bring this to the floor, please.
That.
Second.
Discussion.
I'm going to play Bob here for a minute. Has there been any thought as opposed to summer activity, improving those connections, to improving the winter connections? So, a, you know, we have a cross-country ski facility at the Ski Bowl Park and developing a cross-country loop that would loop down across 28, through the back of town, so that there is that greater connection in the winter as well. I think that's all something that can come out in the planning study. We talked a lot about public engagement in these planning processes tonight, and that's going to be vital for this project as well. So, that's, that would be the kind of input we would, we would like to hear and see what can be developed. I know that it's going to be, that the idea perhaps is expensive, but one of the things I had mentioned to both Ethan and I had mentioned it to Anna, is Breckenridge, probably back in 2009, 2010, no, yeah, 2010, I think, actually put a gondola right in the center of Breckenridge that took people up and over and into, and that, to me, if you could find a way, parking becomes the biggest issue we have to deal with. Find a way to get people into town, I know it sounds crazy, folks, but get it, people into town, have them park, get on the gondola, take them over to Ski Bowl. Okay, again, I just, I think that that makes the most sense, it really does. Get people to park here and go into downtown, and, and, yes, Bob?
I could give you an example of exactly what to talk about, and that is in Park City, Steve Park City?
Heaven Ski Parks, not, no...
The ski park?
I have, yeah.
Okay, that gondola comes down within, but what, it's just one block, but the main drive goes to Park City.
Well, Breckenridge is right, it's in, right in downtown Breckenridge, yeah.
Yeah, and it takes a gondola, six, it's about six feet long, something like that. Drops people quite in time, and it doesn't, and the building's a whole other place, it's not in a parking lot. It's right, you have to walk around, and then you walk down on Main Street, and then you go where you want to go. And, boy, well, they have, oh, I don't know, they, I don't, on a weekday, they probably carry as many people as four to carry us on a weekend. And the people seem to love it, and that's exactly what's going to change the whole picture, because you can't change the road system, the people are going to drive up from Windbridge, they're going to turn off on Futeal Valley Road, and they're going to ski, they're going to go back, and then, nobody does any business there, really, and I can't understand why they're not in business. They're going back south. But this, this gondola right in town, summer, winter, you can't lose your diamond.
I'm sorry, Amy, did you have a...
I was, I understand now, I was going to say, I was wanting to make a change in the speed limit, right?
No, you can.
That is...
So, I was wondering how these pathways were going to, and then, now that you say gondola, okay.
Just, so, my idea is that, because again, you park in, whether it's Park City or Breckenridge, you park right in downtown. And you basically get on the gondola and you're right in downtown, which I just think is a great idea, so...
London says get in here, the best place for a break down is in Queens, where Doc Gell Brody doesn't have his dentist office anymore, that whole area right there, from the, from the, off the school over to Stunts or Tops. San Diego right there, park the gondola right there. You got good rock basis for the cable, you got everything.
Judy.
Kelly and I have been talking about this for a really long time trying to do that. And in Queens, there's two bridges that go over Major Bridge.
Yep. Yep.
And those were done by grants, and a bridge across there, you could be skiing across it, you could be biking across it, and then you wouldn't have to have somebody running, running the gondola. The gondola's a good idea, but it's a very expensive...
I know, it's an expensive idea, I know.
And keeping it going and keeping, you know, I think, a bridge inside of something that is more maybe we could do, that would be doable, and you can ski across it, you can bike across it. We even have out there...
Yeah, Pete?
Very exciting, it sounds like a lot of people would be a part of this, on this committee. One element of access is signing, and you might sign to be a part of that?
Absolutely, yes, we, yeah.
It's all part of access.
Yep, we recognize that.
And that is, you know, we've been focusing a lot on, if we just had better marketing and get on the websites, and all, that's all good stuff, but having real, real, live things that are, that build business here, access to where we are is going to make a lot of difference.
Jennifer?
I just would like to say I appreciate any help we can give, because we're down.
Bruce?
As you guys know, I've got several buses, and I'm a little chatty. I have several friends in the bus with me and one or two other people. In the last four years, I've talked to skiers, I asked them where they're from. One of the major things that we're competing against is if you're four hours away, you're skiing all day long and you're tired. It's human nature, you want to drive three-quarters of that drive, and then relax and eat your supper. You don't want to eat your supper and then have a four-hour drive ahead of you. That gondola, none of that's going to overcome any of that.
Mm-hmm, I got you.
Human nature wants to get 90% of the work done behind them, then they stop and never ask.
Got it. Okay.
Kids, you can get a quick snack at Stewart's, trust me. I had hundreds of tons of bus.
Yeah, okay, any other comments? All right, seeing none, I need to call for vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Next, resolution Ski Bowl Park curfew extension for Wayne Stock, which is an annual, obviously, we, I think this, this resolution...
Thank you, David.
Thank you, David, very much. Resolution to extend curfew has been going on for quite a few years. Need a motion to bring this one to the floor, please? Okay. Any other discussion? I don't think there really needs to be much, but questions? Okay?
Go ahead. Yeah, no campfires?
I haven't heard about a campfire, oh, wait, the bonfire?
For Wayne Stock. For there's, right, so, so we're going to allow, extend the curfew and allow camping, right? For August 1st?
Yeah.
Right?
But no campfires?
We don't have campfires.
We just allowed campfires, it's passed.
Didn't they do it in the middle of the field last time?
That was two years ago. I've been invited to their next Arctic Fund meeting, so we can discuss exactly what they need from the town side and concerns that the town may have. They seem very open to working together. I have no concerns about having a fire. We actually, the town itself has a fire pit down in the beach that we encourage folks to use. It was just simply, Jim, you're correct, it was a matter of where they chose to set it up two years ago. But much better last year, and I am completely confident that having I work together to find and add a good spot. But it should be the resolution that they're allowed to camp there.
It says curfew.
This is more about curfew.
It says curfew and allow camping.
Well, camping, but it says anything about campfires, so... Okay.
If, Pete, if you're confident, then that's all I need. It can be...
Yeah, it'd be nice to keep it. All right. Did I even get a motion?
Yep, we've got it, it's on the floor, yep.
Okay. Any other further discussion? Seeing none, call for vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next is warrants. Need a motion to bring warrants to the floor, please?
Motion?
Second.
Any questions about the warrants?
Yeah, just one.
Whereabouts?
Highway, page four. Must be a misprint, 14 tires for $260.
Disposal?
Three tires have $16, something like that.
So, is that the disposal, warrant tire service, 14 tires for $260? Yeah, so, I...
Which, what's the number?
It's a 475. So, it'd be $185 a tire if it was $2,600.
Okay.
So, yeah, that's the only one I saw that there was a question.
Good point.
So, that might have been different, Paul, that wasn't our normal tires, those were...
Right. Yeah, it's in the hi, it's on the highway, abstract. So, it could be, it could be just missing a zero.
Okay, I'll check. Anything else?
No.
Okay. Okay, call for a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Committee reports. Mr. Hyde?
Well, we haven't had a forum of Peters until recently, so at this point, we haven't had a...
Is that a gavel or a people?
I'm not sure really, but we, now with Peter Oleschek back, we'll have our solid waste committee meeting. Things, I guess, have been going fairly well. We're going to be getting the shed installed here very shortly, I'm sure. And that's, we had a highway committee meeting last week. Somewhat constructive, trying to be cooperational rather than adversarial a little bit, moving forward. We did get actually some agreement and some... a little bit with things moving forward. We did get actually some agreement and some settlement of certain items and brought forth a few other items that need to be rectified and changed. So we are making progress. Committee at this point.
Ms. Bowers?
Marketing is what we wanted to talk about. We have Instagram and Facebook up, Visit Johnsburg, New York. We also have stickers with the QR codes. So we passed them out to some businesses today. If you are a business and you want to grab them, so if you, if you pass these out, you scan them, it takes you to the town page and has a list of all of the different things that people can do, shopping, eating, and different experiences. So if it's, people come in and they want to know what you can do, you can just hand them the sticker, they can scan it, and it lets you know. And then when you go to that page, it hyperlinks to any business's website, Facebook page, or Instagram account. So it tells them what hours they're open and what they can do there. So if you want to grab some of them, welcome to, I have lots more. And that is.
There you go.
I don't need the whole thing, but I'll take it.
Okay.
Mr. Williams?
Yep, we had a sewer construction meeting last Friday. I did bring and provide notes of that meeting, or the topics that were discussed. Again, making progress. Today there was a little setback. I don't know if anyone here was disrupted, but with a poorly mapped infrastructure of, of Main Street, they did hit a water line today, and water was disrupted for a short period of time. They were able to isolate that leak, get it repaired, and back online within a couple of hours. After four hours, we would have required a boil, boil, water alert. So we were able to avoid that. So it's expected in the world of construction. You break things and then you fix them. And that's what happened today. Keller is progressing, they're, they're, as you see, working up Main Street. Jerson has cleared the access road for the Route 28. They, they got final submittals that are coming this week. And yeah, just a lot happening with the sewer. The sewer committee has listened to a lot of, some of the complaints and concerns and how did this happen? And the sewer committee's put together a timeline of the sewer over the past, I guess, short history of it, beginning with Ron Vanslow, the progress that was made under Andrea Hogan, you know, what was done with Mark, and then this board bringing it to construction and the challenges. In that timeline, there's been multiple, multiple public hearings, multiple resolutions. There were two separate 30-day comment periods on the DEC permit of where it was, technology that was being used, so on and so forth, as well as, you know, environmental review comment periods. The sewer is a non-political issue. The sewer is what is hopefully going to help turn the corner for this town in the form of investment and revitalization. We, we have seen that already, the investment that is occurring in our town, properties that are being bought, plans that are, are formulating. So we're going to put a couple more final touches on that timeline, and we will make that available to the public. So the public can see that this has been a non-political.
Work in progress.
Work in progress over the last 10 years or so, through four supervisors and various town boards. On the park side of things, just a reminder that on August 16th, we'll be hosting a mountain bike race, endurance mountain bike race at Ski Bowl Park. You can enter as an individual, you can enter as a team, you can decide to ride for only four hours, or you can extend it to six hours. So the four and sixer mountain bike endurance race will be on August 16th.
Mr. Stevens?
County Johnsburg Senior Committee. We did have a very informative news article that went out in the Sun Times last week. It was, it was very well, very well written, and I think it gave an awful lot of information out there, especially dealing with our, moving forward with the AARP, AARP grant. We have a, we have received a $2,500 grant and looking to be able to improve access for, for people's homes, looking for probably about 10, 10 properties, and that would allow $250 for each one. That does not leave us with a whole awful lot of work that can be done, but still in all, it may be enough to help, to help alleviate some of the issues for some of the folks. Applications are ready to go out?
Yes.
Okay, app, okay, got to look up at Pete. Not yet. Applications are not quite ready to go out yet, but they will be, they will be coming out shortly. Okay, I, I don't want to speak. So anyways, yeah, and once we have, once we have the applications in front, once we have the applications that have been received, we will be, as a, as a committee, we will be looking these applications over, trying to, trying to prioritize the, 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 the needs and which projects to undertake. And we have, we, we have actually received some encouragement that once we have gone through our $2,500 grant, if there is additional work that is needed, we may be able to have, we may have already found some matching funds that would help us carry on further. So, good news, and looking for the, looking to implement the, the grant that we have, that we have received. Yes.
Just in the last couple of days, as a result of the article, we've gotten a lot of, a lot, several offers to donate equipment or materials for this project.
Cool, great, good. That one, Jennifer?
I just get concerned about seniors who may not have the connections, know the viable applications. Is there some mechanism where the committee is?
We're actually, it's a mailing, aren't we?
We, we are, we, we are in the process of, of trying to do that, to individualize the situation also, yes. To get it out, to get word of mouth out to, through various, through various organizations.
But just word of mouth, but then some people may not be able to fill out the application to get.
Understood.
But it's, it's a senior or a representative. How to set up for individuals or family members will have it. Like in the neurocomptery industry, you see a senior.
I'm sorry, Amy, what?
Can we access our back database or the state stock?
I think that's been discussed, that has been discussed, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, yes. Yeah, yeah, the list, we have the list. And I would just, I'm going to piggyback on what Arnold's talking about as far as the senior committee. Arnold, Arthur Webb, Pete Oleschewski, and I will be meeting with the county administrator and with Steve Parks, who is the director of Office for the Aging, to discuss meal site and some of the issues that we've been, we faced, and try to solve some of the problems and try to make the program, get the program back online and a little bit better for our seniors. We've, we've hit some hiccups that have not been, not been pleasant. So. Okay, committee reports. So, privilege of the floor, who wishes to speak?
One thing.
Oh, yes.
I was asked to speak at the 25th anniversary celebration of the Depot Museum. It was, they did a very good job, was well received. We had a lot of people there. The storms were kind and didn't hit until afterwards. It was a really good thing. Tony, he's not here, but they did a really good job of putting that together. Everything was very well done.
Yes, thank you for being there. There was a lot of discussion among some legislators and former members on board, you know, about the speeches that were made about the development 25 years ago. And all the people involved, and the can-do attitude, and it was like, we can still do this. But it was a great gathering, people are in here, we can, people are still.
Agreed. That, that sentiment was evident. There was no doubt about it.
Okay.
I just want to say, it's slightly, but for the good of the, good of the crowd, next Friday, ANCA is having their annual meeting here. So ANCA does great stuff in the Adirondacks and in the community, and it's going to be here from 10 to noon. You can register online to attend, and the Tannery Pond is hosting it. So it's a wonderful way to meet with different people in the Adirondacks who are doing different things in their community to be, to help problem solve. And I think you can register online at the Tannery Pond website. So I highly recommend if you have time to attend. They're an amazing organization. Thirty bucks, yes. Worthwhile. It goes to a good organization.
Okay. Now, privilege of the floor. Who's up? Mindy, come on down.
First and foremost, thanks for approving the rest of that, the funding for the emergency preparedness that they're doing, because Community Fund for the Gormont Region funded as much of that as we could, was it $2,500? So that was really important piece for this town, and I just really appreciate that. Just wanted to mention a couple of free things and cool things at Tannery Pond this, this summer. Tell Kids to Come, the 29th of July is the Seal Colony is coming, or Seal Festival's coming and doing Kids, Kids Opera, and it is free. I know, Pete, you're organizing the youth group. The youth, youth are coming from over in Minerva, but it's always a really fun time. So any grandkids, you know, in town or whatever, spread the word. This Sunday, actually, Bill McKibben is going to be here talking about the power of the sun, 2 o'clock in the afternoon. That's a, as suggested donation of $10, but should be very interesting if you're interested in the renewable energy. So, pretty cool. And Lake Placid Symphony will be here at the end of July as well, so 24th. So, take a look, and then look forward into August, that Kate Hartley is putting together a really amazing art gallery, Woodland Gallery regarding the mosaics. All the kids featuring faces of all the kids and people that were participation or participatory in the putting up the mosaic wall, as well as some new mosaics that she'll have on display. So, pretty cool stuff. There'll be a gallery reception, I think it's around August 6th, so check, check that out. All right, thanks.
Anyone else?
I just want to say that frankly, I'm very pleased I came to the meeting tonight. I didn't think I wanted to come, but I came. And I'm pleased because I'm seeing three or four things here that are, appear to be moving us forward, which is very important in this community. And I'm just thrilled about all of this stuff, the, the mountain-to-river downtown connection initiative that I don't really know about, because I've missed a couple of meetings, so maybe you had talked about it earlier. But also, the zoning grant, which has been discussed for years. The Mill Creek has been discussed for years. We've needed to move ahead with these things, and so it's exciting that that's happening. Thank you.
Anyone else for privilege of the floor? Going once, going twice. Okay, call for motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye, Arnold was. We stand adjourned.